It is six o'clock and we have a very special Crescent City and Crescent City Fire Protection District Board of Directors meeting tonight. So, we just got out of closed session. Mr. Black, is there anything to report out of closed session?
Mr. Mayor, no final actions were taken in closed session.
Okay, thank you. So, we'll go ahead and convene this special meeting and I'd ask Robin to go ahead and take role, I guess, for both the fire district and the city.
Yes, sir. Start with the city council. Councilmember Ania.
Here.
Councilmember Shalong.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gastinow.
Here.
And Mayor Holly.
Here.
Onto the fire board. Directors Erler.
Here.
Director Kelly.
Here.
Vice Chair Short.
Here.
And Chairman Nelson.
Here.
Thank you very much. Mr. Nelson will lead the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. This is the time of the meeting where we're going to deal with public comments. Mr. Nelson and I discussed maybe talk, giving this presentation using every other word, but I think I'll go ahead and read it. It'd be easier. Okay. So, any member of the audience is invited to address the city council and/or the Crescent City Fire Protection Board of Directors on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the council and/or the board is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be a part of the public record. After receiving recognition from either myself or Mr. Nelson, please state your name and city or county residency for the record and public comment is limited to three minutes. So, I would ask, is there any public comment? Let me see. Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back. And under new business, number one, consider an approved and automatic response agreement between the city of Crescent City, Crescent City Volunteer Fire Department and Crescent City Fire Protection District. Take action as necessary and appropriate. Jim, do you have anything to add to that?
I don't think so. We really haven't had a chance. Chief, you want to?
Tonight, what we're doing here is just reapproving the existing agreement. There's one change in this one of any real significance and that is to further this automatic aid and the assistance that we do together is we've come up with a plan to be able to drive each other's vehicles. And the reason for that is many times we have situations where we don't have enough drivers to drive the larger fire apparatus. It takes special licenses. Between the two departments, we have quite a few people that are licensed, but we don't always have the ones that we need. We also have firefighters and, you know, one of the district's officers that drives the equipment a lot lives four blocks from the city department. So, if we have a bigger fire, he oftentimes just goes to the city and rides on a piece of apparatus, but there's been times when there's nobody, no city people there to drive it. We have the same insurance company, both the district and the city, and they said they have no problem with it. The only thing that we're agreeing on to make them happy is we have to agree on who's responsible for what. And the solution, which is in the document, was the entity that owns the vehicle is it'll be on their insurance if there's an incident. So, it could be the district driver might be driving a city truck. It's a city responsibility. If it's the other way around and it's a district truck and a city guy's driving it, it's the district's responsibility. And we have common training, as most of you know. They're all trained the same way, so the drivers should be pretty equal, generally speaking. So, that's the one change in the document.
Okay, thank you. Are there any technical questions of Mr. Wakefield?
I just wanted to know what the benefit was of having, excuse me, the responsibility lie with the actual vehicle rather than the person responsible for the accident.
Well, you could go either way. And if there was a reason to do that, the only reason we went this way is the insurance company said generally it goes with the vehicle. The insurance goes with the vehicle.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Has Bob, Mr. Black, reviewed this?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, seeing no other questions, any public comment on this matter? Thank you, Mr. Wakefield. All right. So, I guess it's up for approval. So, I guess I'd entertain a motion from either the city or the fire district.
I'll move, I'll move on behalf of the city council to consider and approve an automatic response agreement between the city of Crescent City and the Crescent City Volunteer Fire Department and Crescent Fire Protective District.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the automatic response agreement. Any further discussion?
I just want to thank the Crescent Fire Protection District for all they do in cooperation with the city and all the volunteers for what they do to protect our community.
Thank you. So, Robin, would you please poll the vote?
Yes, sir.
I like hearing you say the 10 names. Okay, thank you.
Well, can I ask a question of technicality? Bob, does this need to be two separate motions for each board? Thank you. Okay.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
So, it's been moved and seconded for the city board. So, would we poll the city vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Murray.
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong.
Yes.
Councilmember Ania.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gastinow.
Yes.
And Mayor Holly.
Yes, thank you. And I'll let Mr. Nelson take care of the district board.
Is there a motion from the board to accept this? Pardon me?
I make a motion to accept the changes that were made for this process.
Any discussion on that? A second, a second. A second's been made. All in favor? Aye. Aye. opposed. Motion carried.
Very good, thank you.
Or did you want to do it the, okay, that's how we usually do it.
Did you want to do number two?
Consider and approve the preliminary annual plan of services and costs between the city of Crescent City and Crescent Fire Protection District. Take action as necessary and-
And that's broke down, one-third for the city, two-thirds for the district, except for the training officers, a 50-50 split of that cost. So, this just gives us an idea going forward with budgets, how much we're going to have to budget at both entities to know what we're going to need.
Do you still have a training officer?
Yes.
Is it still Ryan?
No, it's a guy by the name of Kurt Watkins who is out of Arcata Fire and he's doing it.
Okay.
Any other questions of Chief Wakefield? Comments? Okay. Seeing none? Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
Any public comment on this matter? This is the preliminary annual plan of services. Okay. Well, this is going very smoothly, but there's a lot of good hard work that's gone into this and I appreciate that, but I'm sure we've all read it and appreciate it.
I'll move to approve the preliminary annual plan as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
It's moved and seconded by the city to approve the annual plan of services and costs. We usually poll the vote, so if we do that again, please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Ania.
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong.
Yes.
Councilmember Murray.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gastinow.
Yes.
And Mayor Holly.
Yes, thank you very much. Jim, it's your turn.
Is there a motion from our board to accept this? I make a motion to accept. I'm sure a motion's been made. Discussion? Second?
I second.
No discussion. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, very good. You guys could just stay up here. This is going pretty fast. Under presentations, Jim, you want to do that since this is really related to fire protection?
I have three. Presentation on the Insurance Services Office, ISO, public classification rating for the city of Crescent City and Crescent Fire Protection District. Chief?
So, as Gene and I discussed this meeting, we came up with the idea that we should give a little presentation on the, what the ISO is. And ISO stands for Insurance Services Office. And the ISO is an entity that actually is a private entity that works for the insurance business. And what they do, as far as what we're talking about tonight, is they grade fire departments across the country and then insurance rates in that fire department's area are determined by what the fire department's grading is. So, the better the grading, the better your insurance, the worse the grading, the more expensive your insurance is. We went through that process this last year and I think in December or so, we got the final answer of maintaining our grading of four. The scale is one to 10, 10 being the worst, one being the best. There's a handful of ones, 50 or 60 in the United States. And there's some charts that you're going to see or you have seen that kind of show you where we stand. And really, we stand pretty well considering that we're an all-volunteer department and both departments together. So, anyway, that's the start of it. One other thing that I was going to mention tonight because next Monday afternoon, I believe at 4:30 at the fire district headquarters, we're going to be having a regular board meeting for the humble hazmat JPA organization. We've been going to meetings down there for many, many years, once a quarter, and they decided finally they wanted to come to Crescent City to hold one of their meetings just because we've paid our bills for years. There's a city contribution to the JPA and a county contribution to the JPA. The fire district doesn't pay into that, but we certainly take advantage of it. So, if anybody is interested, we'd like to see some local people there just because and it might be interesting, you know. So, did we have anything else?
Thank you. Mr. Dur-
Thank you. Mr. Aneah, are you gonna go?
I didn't know if anybody else from the city wanted to go. I don't think I can that night. I have other obligations.
They're usually short, too. They don't take a long time.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think I'm gonna be fishing, sorry.
Yeah, that's hard. Okay, so we'll discuss it further amongst ourselves, but we'll try and get someone else there. But Mr. Aneah can certainly carry on on his own, but thank you for that invitation.
And thank you for your consideration of the other issues tonight, and we'll keep moving on.
So are we gonna have just general comments or?
Yeah, I think, I think this was just a presentation, so there's no action, but I thought we probably all have some comments for the fire department. Let's start there. Any other, did you want to, any comments from the city?
I just wanna say thank you again for that fire rating, and I know all the training that you do, and it's really appreciated. And I see them working together. I try to go to those, those training burns, and it's always well organized, and we have an outstanding volunteer department. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
So, okay, so I was just going to ask if you, if the board has any feedback on the training, the burns that we've been doing, and how those are going, and then just curious how many volunteers we have right now, any, you know, just any general updates that you can provide with us?
Yeah, we're, you know, we're about 60 still total, about 30, you know, apiece, one way or the other. We're always losing one or two and gaining one or two. We don't take a lot of people at a time, but we don't turn away very many either, so. But we're doing well, and we seem to be busy a lot. Ran 10 calls on Saturday, and, you know, so we're outrunning. I do have, I mean, last year we, the city ran 537 calls in 2013, and the district ran 922 calls in 2013, which is actually a little bit of a reduction. It's kind of bounced around about the last four years, but it has slowed down a little bit. I think this year, a part of the city's decline is the Safeway situation where the city went in and cleaned out all that brush and got rid of the homeless. I know I'm always keeping Gene informed, but we used to run a call or two a week to Safeway, always outside in some transient. And since the brush was cut, we haven't had a call. You know, we've had a few inside the store where elderly people or somebody falls or whatever, but no transient calls. So that's quite a significant difference, but.
Wow, that is great.
And we haven't found them out in the county either, so that's even better.
Yeah.
I don't know where they went, but.
Any, any update on Rosalyn?
She's home right now, and the last time I talked to her, she said she's pain-free right now.
Oh, good.
So she's doing better, you know, it's a lot easier to work through this when you're not hurting. So that's the last thing that she said.
That's good news. Yeah, thank you. That was it for me.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gastonow?
I just wanna say you guys do a great job, and we all thank you for doing this.
Thank you. Thank you to those guys.
Catherine, did you have any other comments?
They make me look good.
Okay. I have one real quick comment. We occasionally have the opportunity to go to statewide conferences, and there's, I think there's two things that we're the envy of other cities. One is our water system, and the second is our volunteer fire department. People cannot believe that we have a fire department that operates as efficiently and is almost all volunteer. It's just kind of unheard of. So I wanna say how much I appreciate all that you do.
Right. Actually, if you go across the United States, there's about 75% of the departments are volunteer. In California, I don't think it's anywhere near that. It's mostly paid departments, so. Yeah, we are fortunate up here, and it's just because there's a lot of people with good community mindedness, and they wanna help, and so we're able to pull it off. Hopefully, we can keep doing that.
Yeah, it's awesome. Thank you.
Did the, did you want, any of your people wanna comment, or?
One of the things that I was gonna talk about, was gonna share was the explorer thing that these guys have started. A couple guys we have back here that's, that's started that program, and that's just building other volunteers and just, and getting parents involved, and, and that whole process has been real positive for, for these guys.
We have about 25 explorers in less than a year of this thing. We'll probably get our first volunteer within a year.
Right.
You have a couple of 17-year-olds. Yeah, so, and that'll be a feature program for us, and maybe a career program for some of them.
It's, it's awesome. I can speak as a parent. My son was an explorer for the Fort Dick Fire Department for four years, and now he's 18, so he's an actual firefighter, which makes me a little more nervous. But he, it's been a great experience for him, and I, I was, I was, you know, hoping that the city would be able to follow in those, in those footsteps. So I'm really happy that you guys are doing it.
Yeah, we, we had a few people kind of step up that were willing to put in that much more time, and, and it's really worked out well.
Yeah, Wade loves it. He's, I mean, it's been a huge part of his life for the last four years, so it's a good experience.
Okay. You know, I'd be remiss, I think, if I didn't ask if there's any public comment on the, on the presentation we just had. Public. Okay, so I, if there's nothing more before us, did you have any other suggestions?
No, do we, is this all that we're doing? So then basically, we can make a motion to adjourn? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion has been made. Second. We don't need a second.
Together, together. Okay. Thank you all for being here. I appreciate that, and this is, this is a great opportunity.
We're not used to such class.
And we'll, we'll go ahead and, and take about five or 10 minutes, and we'll reconvene again just as the city. So stick around if you want, and otherwise, we'll see you in five or 10 minutes. Thank you. So, I'll go ahead and present this to you.
Okay.
Thank you. Do you have a few words for us?
I do. So, hi, my name is Liz Hutchins, and I'm with the North Coast Rape Crisis Team. I would like to thank the council once again for recognizing April Sexual Assault Awareness and Child Abuse Prevention Month. Each year, it is a reminder that sadly, the issues are still with us. It is also an opportunity to honor those we serve. We work each day to provide 24-hour free and confidential services to people of all ages, genders, and circumstances who have been impacted by this violence. We believe that violence is a choice, that no one deserves to be hurt, and it is, and that as a community, we can work to promote safety and accountability. To those ends, we participate in variety of collaborations and multidisciplinary teams with other community, governmental, and tribal organizations. I'd like to mention a particular, a particular accomplishment this year, which directly benefits the citizens of Crescent City. The North Coast Rape Crisis Team has successfully obtained a three-year finance, three-year federal rural grant through the Office of Violence Against Women. Some of the funds will be used to pay for specific training for additional medical staff, who will then be available to perform forensic exams in a skilled and supportive way. Some funds will also be used to build and strengthen our partnerships with Pelican Bay State Prison's PRIA team, PRIA standing for Prison Rape Elimination Act, addressing the specific needs of those incarcerated, as well as those who work in such a challenging environment. We also strive to raise awareness and provide prevention education in the community. We do this by providing a wide range of violence prevention programs for children, teens, and adults throughout the year. We also raise awareness through such events as are listed on the SAM poster that we provided. We want to encourage your participation as we participate, or as we appreciate your support. With you as our community partners, we truly can work towards our vision, a world without violence. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's always good to see you here every year, and your dedication and passion to your subject, and just wanna thank you for everything that you do. It's important, it's really important work.
Thank you. And don't forget the jeans for justice.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Jeans for Justice is April 23rd, and I hope everyone will honor that and have a good, a good reason to wear your jeans on that day. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Sorry. Okay, here we are with this consent calendar. We, the consent calendar is to approve the regular meeting minutes from March 17, 2014, receive and file warrant claims list for the period March 18 through the April 7, and receive and file bi-weekly payroll reports. So the consent calendar's before us.
I move for approval of all four items on the consent calendar.
Yeah, I know it goes to four.
All three items.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's moving the seconded to approve the consent calendar in whole. Any discussion? Okay, would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Aneah?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Gastonow?
Yes.
And Mayor Holly.
Yes. Okay, thank you. We have no reports or presentations tonight, and under communications, I'll read this real quickly. Any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are? Okay, would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Aneah?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gastinow?
Yes.
And Mayor Holly?
Yes. Okay, thank you. We have no reports or presentations tonight, and under communications, I'll read this real quickly. Any member of the audience is invited to address the City Council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be a part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and city or county residency for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes. So, is there any public comment this evening? Yes, sir?
Evening, members of the council. My name is John Lowery, and I just wanted to say hello. I'm a candidate for the Assembly in our very large North Coast District. I live at the other end of the district in northern Sonoma County, and I have traveled up here today to talk to people, learn something more about Delnor County. I've had a very good day, and a lot of good conversations. I'm very interested in local government. My background was in the development of affordable housing, primarily in Sonoma County. We're very successful. We developed about 3,500 apartments and affordable homes, brought in hundreds of millions of dollars into the community. So, I was involved in both the development of housing and in economic development. We work with all 10 local jurisdictions in Sonoma County, and I'm very aware of local government's importance and the important functions that local government performs, and then the constraints that local government faces. And I've heard a lot about that today. Our district has 16 incorporated cities and five counties, so that's a lot of local governments. I believe that the job of a legislator is, in part at least, and a very important part, to represent local governments at the state level, and that is what I intend to do if elected. So, thank you very much for allowing me to join you this evening. I have some cards that I'll leave here, if you'd like to get ahold of me, and I will get back to you at some point. Thank you so much.
That'd be great, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, and to public hearings, we have none. Continuing business, there is none. New business, we are to consider a professional services agreement between the City of Crescent City Municipal Corporation and Bedawi &amp; Associates, a California corporation for professional auditing services, and authorize the city manager to sign an agreement and take action as appropriate and necessary. Okay?
Ms. Boyd to introduce this item?
Very good. Hello?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. First off, I want to mention that we have a correction to the agreement that was in your packet on page 10. The address for the consultant, the street, and state, and zip were correct, but the city said Crescent City instead of Oakland. So, we are making that correction.
I thought they were moving.
We've moved them in.
You sign up with us, you gotta live here.
He was the cheapest, and he wanted to live here.
Yeah.
As you know, we had an audit committee comprised of Mayor Holly and Councilmember Shalong, who did a very fine job in conducting the audit procurement process. I'll just hit the highlights and then let them talk about it if they would like to do so. As you probably are aware, the best practice is to periodically review your audit services, just to make sure that you're getting the best bang for your buck. And also, it's good to have fresh eyes, look at your financial records, give you kind of a fresh input on things, so that's one of the motivations for doing this. So, we issued an RFP. We did extensive outreach there, trying to get some good responses, and we did in fact get eight very good responses to our proposal, to our RFP. And we ended up interviewing three of those candidates, and the audit team, or committee selected Bedawi &amp; Associates. It's a small, client-focused firm out of Oakland, California. Mr. Bedawi has over 17 years of experience doing just exactly what we need him to do here for us. So, with that, I'll turn it back to the audit committee.
Okay. Kelly?
Well, we had fun educating Mr. Holly.
It's always fun.
On the audit process.
Challenging.
No, it was a really good process. As most of you know, I chaired the very first audit committee ever for the City of Crescent City, when we chose Mr. Reynolds quite a few years ago, I think it was back in 2007. And back then, we had a lot of financial challenges, and what was nice about this process is we had a lot more auditor companies, auditing companies to choose from, and we don't have as many financial challenges. So, it made it a very positive experience for me. So, having eight proposals to read, we chose the top four. Actually, one of them dropped out of the interview process after they were invited, so we ended up with three. We felt like the three, it was interesting because the range of proposals was quite wide in price. You know, the most affordable was Bedawi &amp; Associates, and they looked good on paper, but there was, you know, the price for their contract compared to like the next seven was quite substantially different, so we were concerned about that. But it was, it was pretty awesome, because when we actually got to the interview process, he just stood out above everybody else, not only on paper, not only in price, but in presentation as well. He was very knowledgeable, very, very educated, and really seemed to know what he was talking about, so we were pretty excited about that. And we ended up, we actually had three very good interviews, and they all had different strengths, but Mr. Bedawi just seemed to just fit in. And so, I'm really excited to have a fresh perspective for our financials moving forward.
Thank you. I'd like to say too, that all of the three firms that we interviewed were all acceptable. I mean, it was a great process to go through, and it's not always that way when you go looking for auditors, but I think it's been helpful that, you know, the house has been cleaned up, and I think it's a good place to come and audit now, and that helps us, I think, when we go out for auditors. And I will say, even if I had looked at all of these proposals blind to the cost, I would have selected Mr. Bedawi and his company. And so, when you looked at the cost and you realized it was the most affordable of all of them, it was, for me, it was almost a no-brainer, so I think we'll have a good experience, and I want to say how much I appreciate Emily Jean to some extent, and certainly Emily put together the questions and put together the interview process in a very, very positive way, so thank you for your help on that.
Yeah, and just to add to that, even though he has a small growing firm, his experience comes from a very large Capri-C, Capri-C and Larson, which is a very, very large auditing firm. So, he's actually, has tremendous experience, and has gone out on his own and is growing his business, and so I think that might be, we might be the benefit of that price reduction, so anyway, I think you'll all enjoy his services.
I think, I think too, we have the benefit of having Mr. Bedawi himself here for a lot of the work, and so that's not always the case with audit firms. They send junior people in, so we're gonna have the man himself for much of the time, so I appreciate that. He does things like, they, I think, I think it was Mr. Bedawi that also has a quality control person.
IT.
An IT person. They're really big with IT, and so they'll be able to do this in a really efficient way as well. So, I think Mr. Bedawi's firm comes highly.
I think you're, I think they also have a quality.
They have a quality.
One of them.
They do the work, and then somebody else has a secondary look at it to make sure it's accurate, and I appreciated that.
Yeah.
Okay. So, any public comment on this? Okay, we'll bring it back to the council.
Any questions from the council?
Mm-hmm. Any questions?
No, I'm very impressed by some of the cities that he, that they're auditing. Antioch is very financially challenged right now, and then I see you have Susanville, which is an isolated community just like us, so he has, sounds like he has a vast experience.
Yep. Other questions? Okay, I think I'd entertain a motion.
I would move to accept the proposed contract from Bedawi &amp; Associates to be the City of Crescent City's next auditor.
Second.
Okay, is it moved and seconded to hire Mr. Bedawi as our auditor, and to authorize the city manager to sign the agreement? I guess that's a part of the motion.
So, yeah, so amended.
Okay. So, this is important, would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Aneah?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gastinow?
Yes.
And Mayor Holly?
Yes. Okay, thank you, and I'm sure this'll work out fine. Okay, so, under city council items, we have legislative matters, is there any legislation we should be aware of? No? Okay, very good. Moving on, city manager report and city council directives, Mr. Plazzo?
On the legislative side, assuming everybody's following Sarah's emails on the legislation that's going on at the state right now. There's also Legislative Action Days coming up, a little late in getting registered, it's April 23rd, but just, you know, kind of another double check, if any council member wanted to go to that, let me know, and I'll talk to Sarah and see if there's any possibility of attending that. There's also Redwood Empire Division Meeting Event in Fort Bragg, May 16th. I believe this is the date for that, you know, next meeting, so if you're interested in attending that as well, if you could let me know as soon as possible, so we can sign up.
How soon do you need to know about those things?
You know, the April Day tomorrow for the Legislative Action Days, the Redwood Empire event, probably by the end of the week.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just, you know, make sure you get the hotels. Yeah, hotel registration.
Because they only have a few hotels in Fort Bragg, so the sooner the better, because they get full fast in Fort Bragg.
And I'm planning to go to the one in Fort Bragg, I don't know. We don't need to commit right now, but I know Catherine, you'll be going to that?
Yes.
Of course.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. So, let Mr. Plazzo know? Okay. Thank you. Onto reports, concerns, referrals from the city council? So, let's start with Catherine.
Thank you. So, it's been kind of busy. We had, some of us met with the students from Crescent Elk on tobacco issues at City Hall on the 19th of March, which was really invigorating, in my opinion. And then, I chaired the, my first meeting as the Redwood Empire Division President for the League of California Cities in Ukiah on March 21st, and that's when we had the first-ever Candidates Forum for the League ever, which was, we had a great turnout, we had three candidates for State Assembly and State Senate, and then we had our regular business meeting, and we also had the legislative meeting, and then we had our dinner, and it was a terrific turnout for all. And then I blasted back up here for the next day for the Harbor Ribbon, which was a really great turnout for the harbor, and I was really pleased for the harbor, and really proud of our community for that. And then, we had Congressman Hufman was up here on March 29th to discuss Social Security and Medicare issues, and we also learned a lot about High Cap, and that was March 29th. And then, April 1st was really a busy day with a bittersweet sending-off party for our Laura Haben, who has been, had been with the city for 32 years. We had the Solid Waste Authority Meeting, which I'm not on that board, but I've been paying close attention to that. And then, we also had a meeting on an issue which I feel is important to the city, it's not completely in our jurisdiction, but they're doing some preliminary mining surveying, I guess you would call it, on, right above the Smith River, and so I feel like since that's where we get our water for the city, I attended that meeting. So, that was all on April 1st, and then on April 2nd, we had the BiCoastal Regional Airport Authority Meeting, and our city manager sent out a memo on that for the approval of getting airport JPA members to commit to helping to fund a part of the RSA Runway Safety Area funding for that, so that was what was happening, and I hope some of our council members will be attending the Fort Bragg Redwood Empire Division Meeting. It would be nice to have us there. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem Gastinow?
Thank you. I had a busy week after our last meeting, it was the tsunami safe week, starting on the 19th. A lot of the stuff that we did, we had 358th graders, we took around on the tours, and that was on the 19th, and then we also had the public on the 22nd, and the ribbon cutting, and then on the 23rd was the tsunami fun run. All this stuff could not have happened without the great cooperation of the city and the crews working, and I want to thank them for getting things done. I mean, you come up with these crazy ideas for these events, and they were just there for every part of it, helping put up the kiosks, blocking the roads, making sure everybody was safe and had a good time, not to mention the donation of the cultural center for all the activities. So, it went off without a hitch with, and lots of great compliments and everything, and hopefully, we're gonna have the same thing happening again next year. And we are working on the, I gotta get back working on the kiosks, so we can get them back in on the 1st of July, so that we can start out with a great tourist season and have this nice tsunami tourist walk there for everybody to enjoy throughout the year. So, city did a great job, and I want to thank them again for doing that. Let's see, leading awards, the law enforcement administrators from Delnor Awards was on the 25th, and attended that with other council members. We had, of course, on the 26th, the tsunami OES drill, which we evacuated out, had great cooperation, again, from the fire departments in the city, and everybody was working on that. And then, thinking that's pretty much, where are we at? Oh yes, and the Solid Waste Management Authority Special Meeting for the R3, that was very interesting, that's more good public comment. And then, of course, we have another meeting coming up on the 9th, in a couple days for that, but that's basically it for me.
Okay, thank you. Kelly?
I've been pretty busy this last month. So, about a week and a half ago, we had the Chambers Annual Economic Summit, and it was amazing event, and what?
That too.
Yeah. The highlight of the day was, of course, the agribusiness panel, which everybody seemed to thoroughly enjoy, and a lot of the feedback on the surveys was that, you know, how's the chamber gonna top this one? So, I was pretty proud of it, and it was a lot of really great information. The city did a really great presentation. Eric Taylor was very, he did a really good job, and everybody enjoyed his presentation as well, so pass on our thanks to Eric. I participated in the tsunami surge fun run at 8 o'clock in the morning on a Sunday. I know. I ran about halfway and realized, I am way out of shape. But it was really nice to see Mr. Gastinow there, leading the way, you know, and Eric Weir was there, you know, on, this is on a Sunday morning, so city, I'm just always proud of our guys, so thank you. I know you put a lot of work into that event. Attended the Harbor Ribbon Cutting, our harbor is beautiful, I'm so excited about it. Mr. Holly and I did the audit interviews. I participated in the second cemetery cleanup behind Home Depot, which is just a personal thing that I've been getting involved with, which is just an important thing, I think. It looks so much nicer. I attended the Chambers Mixer at Vita Caccina. I attended the fair's tri-tip dinner and auction, which was crazy successful. We served, I think, well, they sold over 900 tickets, and we ran out of food at the end of the night. I mean, everybody got to eat, but it was an amazing event. I'm gonna guess they made, I don't know, $15,000, $20,000 in, you know, four hours. So, I helped set up for the event and then worked at it the whole time, so it was a very long day, but it was just very rewarding, and I know that Randy Hatfield and his staff and the fair board were very pleased. Attended the lead-in awards, always nice to see our officers given the recognition they deserve for all of their public service. I've attended another quarterly Sutter Steering Option, I forget what we're even called now, Strategic Options Steering Committee Meeting. now, Strategic Options Steering Committee meeting. The chamber has already started their 4th of July and Sea Cruise meetings, so I encouraged city to engage early. And, oh, I attended Delnor Ambulance's stakeholders meeting. Steve Wakefield and I were there, from the city, anyway, and it was very informative. I encourage all of you to follow up, if you couldn't be there, to have a conversation with Mr. Sandler. It was a very good process. He hired an outside consultant, and Mr. Sandler was not there for the meeting, so it was really a good way for community stakeholders to provide input. And really, the purpose was, he just wants his company to do a better job and to serve, you know, the community better. And I admire any business owner that goes through that process, so it was a good experience. And I think that's about it.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ania?
Yes, it has been a busy three weeks. I attended our POP meeting to promote our pool. Went to the Economic Summit, it was excellent, Kelly, and it's probably the best one that I've ever attended. So, I'm going to wait and see how you're going to top it next year. I went to the Harbor Ribbon Harbor Ribbon Cutting Ceremony with my fellow council members, and also the lead-in awards. Went to the candle lighting for the Child Abuse Council at the fairgrounds. Went to the art walk last Friday, which was really good. A lot of businesses were participating. And also, met with the kids for the tobacco issues with the children. So, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Well, it has been a busy time for all of us. I started out three weeks ago, I guess, with the senior center annual meeting, and then it was followed by a regular meeting in the senior center, and we're working over the personnel policies. The next day, though, it was Mayor's Day, and I know everyone celebrated that. I know I did.
You didn't call us.
Yeah, I was all by myself.
Aren't you supposed to do a keg year on Mayor's Day?
Yeah, well, this was earlier in the day. The, I actually had the opportunity to have a ride-along for the Meals on Wheels program. That's something that they do on Mayor's Day, and that was, it was a great experience. You know, we went all around the county, and, not all around, but the immediate city and the immediate adjoining areas, and delivered meals. And it's so important, and you know, a lot of the importance is the meals that the people have, but even as important probably is that daily contact that especially isolated elders have that aren't mobile. So, it was a great experience, and I'd forgotten just how great it was. So, that's a good, very, very good thing that the senior center does. I, too, was there to greet the children when they marched down to the city hall for TUP, attended the Economic Summit, and again, very, very interesting, with an emphasis on agriculture in our area. So, that was, that was a real interesting topic that I knew very little about. Harbor Dedication, we all attended that, and that's an exciting thing that's happening in our, happened to our city and with our city, and anxious to see if that tsunami safe technology works, but I don't want to test it anytime soon. The audit interviews, of course, you've already heard about. Laura's retirement gathering, that was very tasteful. Thank you, and we'll miss Laura a great deal. Candlelight, I attended, actually with Rich, I attended the candlelight ceremony, I guess you'd say, for the Child Abuse Council. And immediately following that, I went to the strip mine presentation that Catherine mentioned. The strip mine presentation, the, anyway, we're all concerned with the, this is in color, isn't it? We're all very concerned with the quality of our water, and the strip mining is a concern that we all really sincerely have. If that, if those chemicals get in the water, it could eventually reach us, and so we're going to be, I know that both Mr. Plazzo and Mr. Weir were both there as well. So, we're going to be monitoring that very closely, and we may even get ahead of it. I don't know. I haven't talked it over with Mr. Plazzo yet, but we need to keep a close eye on that.
We'll be keeping a close eye on that, and we'll report back to council once we know anything, when the environmental documents come out.
Great, thank you. The lead-in awards, of course, I attended those, and those were great, and we had a lot of awards with the police department, and it was interesting that Eric Weir received an award for the efforts that he put in, he and everyone, but, I mean, he was one of the leaders in cleaning up behind Safeway, and that was-
Eric and, both Eric's.
Both Eric, okay, both Eric's, got it. And so, it was, you know-
And Robin. Robin won an award, too.
But it was interesting when we heard the statistics with the fire department earlier this evening, and the impact that made on the safety of our community, and that was a very appropriate award. I think that was a great selection, chief. So, and Solid Waste Management Authority, R3 Special Meeting, and that continues, and will be continuing for a while, but we'll be working on it. So, as you can tell from our city council reports today, it's not just council meetings that we attend, it's making appearances throughout the community, and that's what everyone can expect, I think. So, thank you very much. Is there anything more to come before us this evening, Mr. Plazzo?
I have no further items.
Okay, very good. Okay, so, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you.[1792.25] (applause)